convene the committee of the whole January 11th and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson, Fanoukian, Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker. Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. I have heard from Bill Fanoukian due to illness. I don't expect Bill to attend our meeting this evening. He's the only one I've heard from. And with that, I will move to the consideration this evening is the topic of cost savings, efficiencies and new revenue. I'm going to turn to Finance Director Kathy Haley to introduce the topic and others will be participating.
Thank you, Mayor. So during the 2015 property tax levy, the question was raised as to what steps the city has taken to save and reduce costs, increase efficiencies and find newer increased revenue streams. So that's the purpose of this memorandum and the presentation that we were bringing forth to you this evening. I think we're aware during the budget process last year, best practice was the term that we used quite a bit and we adopted some financial policies based on these best practices. The policies were aimed to promote and facilitate positive change. They're being implemented throughout city government and are meant to improve on efficiencies and create internal savings while trying to come up with alternate sources of funding to provide the level of services the city of DeKalb residents have become accustomed. These policies are not intended to be comprehensive or exhausted, but they are the but staff will work within the context of these policies continually even outside the budget process. So we'll explore lawful, creative and insightful financial recommendations to present to the corporate authorities of the city and use these policies as the cornerstone of future financial recommendations to maintain a comprehensive, sound fiscal management of all city economic resources. So with that, we did an analysis over the last couple of years of some of the ongoing savings and some of the one-time savings that staff has implemented throughout the city. As you can see, the ongoing savings kind of we grouped in categories. So I have several other people up here that you'll get to listen to speak and it's not just me. General category, general efficiencies and savings, personnel and benefit savings, budget and general fund policies, technology efficiencies and additional and increased sources of revenue. And then we had some one-time savings as well. So first, again, starting with best practices, we created a new purchasing manual that centralizes purchasing for the city. And we have a true purchasing agent down in the finance department. We have centralized office supplies for the city hall. And I think we've seen some savings on that right out of the gate. It's only been implemented in about two months. So. The finance department did the capital asset audit entries and all the statistical tables for the audit rather than having the audit team do them and pay them an hourly fee. So that's about a $3,000 savings annually. We did have a phone line audit from the Spyglass Group. They really looked at our bills and our line charges and came up with some future savings. Maybe some lines that were no longer being used that could be discontinued and grouped some of our billings so that we were being charged a little bit less for about $18,500 savings annually for the city. The city reduced the number of staff required to be bonded and instead we put them under a group policy saving about $4,000. The finance department reviewed the city's 10-year history of expenditures related to the building operations. The configuration of the building permit plan review and inspection services has varied quite a bit over the last several years. The city went from 10 inspectors in 2006 to two in 2015. Similarly, nine administrative assistants which served the community development department and public works departments were reduced to three. So as the number of inspectors has decreased, so has the attention to proactive code enforcement activity with the remaining staff working on redevelopment and new construction projects. Cost savings have been estimated from FY 13 to 14 and FY 15 of over $145,000 annually. The city is currently working on a new IGA with the sanitary district for billing services. We do all their billing currently. But we are trying to capture that cost and not incorporate it within the water rate itself. So it'll be more transparent and we'll invoice them on a monthly basis. The fund balance reserve continues to grow. Our financial policy is 25% of annual operating expenditures. In FY 2015, we ended up at 23.44% or over $8 million, $8,108,755. You can compare this to less than 1% or $22,169 in FY 2010 and fiscal year 10. And I think this chart just depicts that the significant drop that had to do with the economy and how we're trying to pull that back up. The city is phasing out the reliance of TIF transfers to the general fund. The decrease will go down to the same amount that the general fund will be picking up or we'll try to estimate that as closely as we can in the property tax revenue at the end of each of these TIFs. And again, this chart below shows kind of an FY 15 that we are decreasing that transfer, the first two lines year to year until we get to about where we think we'll be able to pick up property tax dollars somewhere around fiscal 17. Fiscal 15 budgeted expenditures compared to 16 were decreased by about 5.78%. The general fund went down between these two fiscal years by 2.27% or $800,173. And you can see overall across all of the funds between fiscal 15 and fiscal 16, there was a decrease in budgeted expenditures. I think Tim is also here, but we implemented a 10-year capital infrastructure and equipment plan for the water fund and passed a water rate increase over the 10 years needed to support this plan. We have a new cell tower lease agreement with T-Mobile negotiated that will generate about $30,000 in annual revenues. The cell tower lease revenue currently is dedicated to the fleet fund. New IML projections came out at the end of December. They are projecting an increase actually over across all LGDF revenue sources, which is income tax, local use tax and motor fuel tax for FY 17 of more than 6% of the city's budgeted amount for FY 16. The local use tax is the highest increase for these three sources primarily due to the fact that Amazon started collecting the use tax in Illinois in February 2015. Due to the increase and this again, if you have questions, Ellen is here, but due to increased development, the city converted to an interim contract with SafeBilt to ensure that building permit revenues would be sufficient to complete the projects even under a transition. So the amendment converted SafeBilt from a percentage fee basis to an hourly fee basis. It is expected that in the short run, moving to an hourly rate will be to the city's benefit with several large projects on the horizon. And will allow the city to pay as needed for services, ensuring resources needed to complete the project regardless of whom is selected as the vendor moving forward. The city has secured, this is like federal grant, $357,300 in state apportioned in portioned funds from the Illinois Department of Transportation Airport Improvement Program for fiscal 16. These funds will be used for resurfacing the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport parking lot and the entrance road. And I'm going to turn it next over to Eric, Fire Chief Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. I'm going to talk about some of the improvements to the agreements that the fire department has made over the past year. We brought to you about a year ago, an agreement with Kish Health Systems, which has currently saved the city about $11,028 and we're expecting that to be higher. And what is that, that is for is we used to be charged for ambulance restock supplies when we transported a patient to the hospital. And the hospital has since agreed to waive that fee for all fire departments in the county. And that was done by our initiative through the city of DeKalb. About two years ago, we brought to the council a staffing plan and that staffing plan had to do with swing shift. And what we use for the swing shift is to reduce overtime. Currently, if you remember, our overtime in the fire department was headed for about a million dollars. And with the swing shift savings and some personnel hiring, we brought that down to about a reduction. We saved about $200,000 per year with using the swing shift. Every day, we with the swing shift, we, we schedule their staffing every, about every three weeks in advance. And with that, we schedule them on days that are going to cause overtime. So every day that person who's working swing shift is actually saving us about $1,000 in overtime costs. We hired a part-time person in our fire department in June and that person was brought on to increase our timely billing for our fire cost recovery. Last year, in 2014, we're going to actually bill about $22,738. So we're going to increase our revenue by about $22,000 just by the hiring of that person and the timely billing. With the assistance of the city manager, we are able to negotiate a contract. This is probably our biggest savings. We were able to negotiate a contract with NIU that expires in 2019 that adds about 4% of revenue to our contract every year. Ending in 2019 with the big bump for $831,000. So we're going to add about $275,000 per year to the city's budget starting in 2019. So in 10 years, that's a little over $2 million, some savings. Also in that, we were able to get a one-time payment for a new ladder truck, a new used ladder truck. We had about a million dollar savings from the demolition of the Worldist Building. I'm going to let attorney Frieders, if you'd like to address that at all.
Through the litigation strategy that was directed by the council, we were able to compel the private property owner to undertake that demolition in lieu of having the city complete it. So the estimates that we had for demolition of the structure ranged from the mid-six figures up to seven figures for demolition and remediation that was necessary to be completed because of the deterioration and failure of that building. Again, that was completed using private funds in lieu of public funds.
We never miss a chance to write a grant. We write multiple grants every year. Last year, we were successful in three grants. One was for FEMA Training Tower for $239,000, which is going to help our ISO rating down the road. If you watch our Facebook page, we posted some pictures. It's set to be done in March of this year. 3M Corporation gave us $2,500 for a project called Statex and it's for some new technology in firefighting. It's basically a fire grenade. You would walk into a room and pull the pin and throw it in. It extinguishes fires in places like dorm rooms or confined space rooms for quick rescue. And also we received a $1,000 grant from Allstate Foundation to use for our fire prevention program. One of our biggest accomplishments that we're most proud of is our ladder truck. Our ladder truck arrived on Sunday, yesterday. So we're in the process of upgrading that. That saved the city about $700,000 over a new ladder truck. We had the opportunity to see the new ladder truck that this replaced. It was $1.2 million. So you can see it's exact same model, exact same spec. So just a few years old or so. Very happy to get that and we'll have that on the road here in the next month or two. So that, I'm going to turn it over.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to cover some personnel and benefit savings that the city has realized. First, starting off with health insurance. Obviously, we, as I mentioned at another meeting, health insurance benefits were analyzed and will continue to be analyzed in depth for the next plan year, which would start January 1st, 2017. Continuing to review and analyze additional high deductible plans. And we are looking forward in the future with the incorporation of a new HR director position. Primary focus will be to continue to look at benefit cost savings through wellness initiatives and programs as well as plan design and plan offerings. And this is going to continue to be the new HR director's top priority. And I'll talk about the savings we realized just this year and the few changes we were able to accomplish. The city also changed its workers' compensation program by increasing access coverage for all employees to 650,000 from what used to be 600,000 per incident. And the savings was about $19,947 annually for that change in coverage. The change to health insurance structure, as I mentioned, we rolled out January 1st, plan year of 2016, so just this month. And had an initial projection of savings at about $20,000. This was projected that only 12 employees would change from the current PPO plan to either the HMO or the new high deductible with HSA plan. And based on an initial rollout, we had almost 40 employees. Actually, we have 41 at this point, 39 as of January 1st. We've had two new employees brought on board and both of those new employees chose the less, most cost-effective plan of an HMO. So we're at 41 employees, but with the 39 employees as of January 1st, this equated to $133,088 savings, which we projected 20,000. So again, with a new HR director, we will continue to have that person focus on these sorts of initiatives and continue to realize additional savings at this amount or higher. There's also been past practice in the city allowing employees to roll over unused vacation time above and beyond what the city policy allowed for. And this is no longer being allowed. All employees have been communicated that you use it or you lose it. And we highly encourage work-life balance. So we want our employees to take the time off that they have earned so that we don't have unnecessary, overinflated liability on the books. Regular salaries under the general fund decreased by $191,000 from fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 16. This is primarily due to no longer having the large liabilities of benefit time, which I just mentioned, such as vacation and also comp time in the employees' banks to be able to cash out when they leave employment with the city. The city implemented a 40-hour work week for non-bargaining unit employees. With converting all exempt employees to a 40-hour work week and a With converting all exempt employees to a 40-hour work week and assuming a weekly increase of 2.5 hours per employee, the city would see an annual increase of 4,290 hours of increased productivity. This is the equivalent of two additional full-time positions, just with increase of the work week. And based upon an average hourly rate for these employees, the annual value of the productivity gained is about $203,174,000, when the actual implementation of the compensatory time was $150,248. So the value of the productivity gain exceeded the implementation cost by $52,425 annually. Reoccurring comp time was eliminated for non-bargaining unit employees and estimated annual savings of $185,672. Under the prior system, employees accrued comp time, compensation time was a deferred liability to the city, typically paid out upon separation from employment at a higher pay rate than what it was earned at. The revision to the comp plan, compensation plan maintained deferred compensation payments that employees were entitled to at current wage rates. So when the employees retire or leave the city of DeKalb, they're not being paid out at then salaries, they're paying out at today's salary. So that was implemented as part of the new policy. The city transferred the city's Medicare primary retirees to a group Medicare Health Program administered through Benestar with an approximate savings of $49,328.40 per year. And this was part of the, and coincided with the retiree phase offer department dependent coverage, which is now, as a reminder, being paid at 100% by the retiree. So that phase out was completed, and in conjunction with that, the Benestar, which is a true Medicare supplement, was implemented. The economic adjustments that typically is given to non-bargaining unit employees had been pushed back from July 1st, 2015 to January 1st, 2016, and this, the city realized a savings of $55,435. The city delayed the start of the, of new personnel in fiscal year '16, which provided a savings of more than $50,000 to the general fund. And that covers the personnel and benefits, and I'll turn it over to Chief Laurie.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about some of the technology efficiencies in the city, council, staff, and community. Let me just say this before I get started. Sometimes as much technology as you implement, sometimes there are some inefficiencies as well. So during this last snowstorm, we had issued a code red warning citizens about the parking, and we had a operator error in regard to that, so I apologize to the community for that. Anyone here that'd like to speak to me personally about it, I'd be happy to address those.
Thank you for fixing it so quickly.
Well, yeah.
We had a good laugh.
Well, I, I didn't laugh, to be honest with you, but I, I did notice the error, and I made contact with our dispatch center, and it was corrected. So I apologize to the community for that. Going into what we've accomplished recently in regard to technology, we implemented a program, I guess I should kick us over, that's been endorsed by the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police in regard to a system called APRIS. APRIS is a system that really does many things for us, but I think first and foremost, what it does, it adds a lot of convenience to the community. APRIS is a system that takes and provides electronic accident reports instead of, for example, typically before we have this system, someone might either write correspondence to the city requesting a copy of an accident report, an insurance company might come in requesting it, an attorney, whatever the situation may be, but it was usually a hand transaction or a hard mail transaction to the client or the customer. What APRIS did for us was came in, provided us with all the necessary hardware for the system to operate, and all the support for the system to operate at no cost. Again, it was endorsed by the Illinois Chiefs Association, has been implemented for several years throughout the state of Illinois, and it allows someone who is involved in an accident or a law firm or an insurance company to take and access the accident report via the internet. So over the last four years, we've been handling accidents at a rate of about 1,400 accidents, give or take, on average, a year. If we equated that to time spent to hand, hand-process these, and I made the estimate based on 15 minutes, I would suggest it probably takes a lot longer, but if, if we looked at it on a 15-minute increment for those 1,400, we were looking at about 350 personnel hours just to process accident reports going out to the community. So the net savings is going to be somewhere between $7,000 and $7,200 in regard to that. The exact dime, nickel and dime savings on that is probably yet to be determined over the next few years. Also, our revenues decreased from 20, or I'm sorry, increased from 2014 to '15, up to, increased by $2,140, just in the process of handling that. So APRIS was a good thing. APS ticketing system. Let me talk to you just for a second about that and what it does. APS is a system that takes and allows a police officer on the street to input data from the Secretary of State's database into a ticket-writing system, and not only into that, but into our other databases or other software processes in the police department. So a police officer can issue a citation and not have to sit and write it all out. There's some inherent values in that, especially for people who have to read those tickets, because sometimes the legibility on them isn't the greatest when they handwrite them. So this takes that out of the equation. But really what it does is takes the data and populate it from the street, all the way up through the police department records section, all the way to, to the circuit court. So it's another methodology used to streamline the process. What APS is also going to allow us to do is to make other applications viable. For example, traffic stop data sheets that have been around for a while and used in racial profiling data collection. We're programming our ticket system to handle that as well. This year, we introduced, or the governor and legislature introduced a new law in regard to pedestrian stop data collection, and that too is going to be processed through our APIS down the road later this year. Again, another cost savings, I can't quite quantify that for you, but it definitely helps us out. I got to tell you, this is a, to me, this was a big one, and implementing a credit card payment system, to, you know, probably everybody in this room is asking us why it didn't happen before, and I don't have the answer for that, but that credit card system allows us to do so many things, not just pay fines and fees, but it dramatically decreases the amount of time the officer's taken off the street to process an arrestee. So if someone gets arrested, and it's a bondable offense, and they don't have cash on hand, but they've got a viable credit card, they can utilize that credit card through the system to make the payment, process any other fees associated with that arrest, and, and be bonded out. Instead of that police officer taking that person from processing through arrest, taking them in custody to the sheriff's office to be deposited with the sheriff, to be processed all over again. So when you look at people being detained unnecessarily in correctional facilities, this was a very simple step. We believe that the cost savings annually are going to be $17,000 to $20,000 in regard to this. Just as an example, 384 subjects arrested in 2015 bonded out via the credit card system. The next, the next bullet item is the OSSI system. OSSI is our software. It's everything that we do in the police department, from the reports we write, to the processing of criminal information, to dispatching, to processing 911 calls. It literally is the technology brain work behind everything we do. The introduction of that system also had another component that's really helped us out. That component was the ability to implement intelligence-driven policing, which tells us where we need our police officers and what part of our city, and when we need them, at what times, and deploy those resources based on what we know from our intelligence-driven policing module. It also provides a police planning module, which tells us some of the more effective ways to deploy those officers and at what time they're needed the most. So as you know, we, we had some pretty serious overtime expenditures a fiscal year or two back. As a result of the net savings in regard to implementing the system and following the guidance given to us in intelligence-driven policing and a police planning module, we, in, in calendar year '15, we saw a reduction of over 4,000 hours of overtime. Huge, huge. I believe that that's going to continue to repeat itself, not that those reductions will be there every year, but will, will start to stabilize at a more reasonable level in how we deploy operationally and the cost of that deployment. You've heard from the fire department, there were some grants. PD is always after some grants as well. We, we did get a burn grant for $15,000, which will provide us some investigative technology to help us work on cases such as burglaries and in-store thefts and things of that nature. The Calhoun County Community Foundation gave us a $6,500 grant for five or almost six AEDs to put more automatic defibrillators in the hands of the officers. We always fundraise for Camp Power. Again, this year, we fundraised approximately $25,000. That was all community-based. There was also a contribution from the city, but the community's been very good to us in Camp Power, so I'd thank you for that. We used about $26,000 from I.DOT Traffic Enforcement Grants last year, which means $26,000 in overtime we didn't have to spend. It comes off of our books, but it goes back into the city coffers. We did attempt a Department of Justice Community Order of Policing Grant for $186,000, but that didn't make, excuse me, didn't make it, but we're going to go back at that again this year. Crime-free housing, one of the, one of the technology advances we've, you know, had, again, with the help of the fire department and IT, was implementing the Firehouse Software Program to help us process our inspections, our report writing, and our picture-taking to document scenes. Literally, the crime, the crime-free housing inspector can go out with their iPad, take pictures of a scene, begin to process a report, issue correspondence, begin, begin the input for data for issuing a complaint down the road, everything, without having to go back to the office to fill out the paperwork. And that data is going to be stored and utilized by other departments, such as City Legals, they process some of those complaints. And I guess one of the ironies, and you may have seen that, is we had a local heroin dealer this last year that was so kind to forfeit his relatively new Ford pickup truck that we've utilized and changed to a vehicle to get rid of one of our aging vehicles in crime-free. So we've applied white door panel, or white door skins to it, and it's now a black and white pickup truck you'll see around town with crime-free housing written on it. So that was courtesy of a local drug dealer. And I'd like to have Kathy come back up. Thank you.
So just to quickly wrap up, city staff will continue using best practices to assist the city of DeKalb in providing essential services for the continued health, safety, and welfare of the community by identifying specific policies and procedures to contribute to improved government management. Best Practices aims to promote and facilitate positive change while maintaining the high level of service residents and businesses expect that visitors enjoy in a fiscally sound manner. And I think we'd all be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions of Kathy or others? Alderman or Rayco?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to thank city staff for approaching their work with open eyes to identify savings, and I encourage you to continue to do that despite disappointments in grant allocations. I appreciate the ongoing efforts to go back and reapply. I know that sometimes makes a difference, and you learn from the, from the process. But again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Okay. Other comments? I would like to, to note appreciation from council for the effort that has gone into this analysis. I know there was a lot of concern expressed in our December 14th meeting where we were focused on the property tax levy, primarily funding fire and police pensions. There were a number of questions raised at that time, what kind of savings have been done in city operations. I think the policies and procedures that have been reviewed over the past month, Kathy, summarized in a very succinct overview of cost savings, efficiencies, and new revenue. There's a support memo to tonight's agenda that covers all of the content from the PowerPoint this evening. I would encourage everyone to digest the information in this. This will be inherent in our upcoming review of the FY '16, FY '17 budget projections that we'll be moving into in the next several months. So appreciation expressed to not only Finance Department, but all of the departments that are integral to city operations, and the effectiveness of, of looking at those policy and procedures to promote positive change in our, our city government. So I think taxpayers should feel confident that we do have our eye on the overall goal of effective and efficient city operations. So thank you, Kathy, and others. And city manager, Gora, thank you. Other questions of the staff at this point? Hearing none, I've got a couple people registered for comment. Lynn Fazekas.
Lynn Fazekas, Fourth Ward. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I looked at the analysis of savings, and a lot of them seem commendable. There's more work on, for example, healthcare issues than I've ever seen, and some of the technology that's being put to use is pretty darned exciting. That being said, as I went through the analysis, there were a lot of things that were, well, there was a badminton game going on. So you've got, for example, the phone line audit, savings of $18,500. That's great. But then you have dues and subscriptions are up, $20,000. You have the health insurance structure, savings of $133,000. You have almost doubled the professional training and development budget, $135,000. So it, you know, we, we could do this all day, the badminton game. So as there are savings and efficiencies, although very commendable, are something that should be done all the time. I personally work for a company where the expenditures are looked at and, and reduced where they can be, and efficiencies introduced regardless of revenues. That's pretty much what I don't see with the city of DeKalb, but boy, would I like to. Okay, so I, I do find it deeply, deeply dishonest that there was about, there were about a million dollars in general fund transfers, transfers out of the general fund to the airport fund and a couple of other funds. So when you're looking at total expenditures, it can be kind of tricky to see what's really going on due to these transfers, which can be highly variable. So I want to cut to the chase, and I want to say that what we really need to be looking at is that DeKalb expects to spend $1.5 million more in wages and pensions than it did last year. year. Here's how it was done. I added up the increases in regular wages, part-time wages, temporary wages, no OT, no noise like that, nothing variable, and then FICA and pensions. For the general fund was up on these wages, $654,900 in this budget over what was spent last year. For FICA and pensions, $289,900, for a total of a $945,000 increase in just wages for one year. And that's just the general fund. The other thing that was done was that $500,000 was peeled off of the general fund and put into the water fund, for the water fund to take care of. So we look at the water fund, and we see that the same estimates of wages to be spent this year, the difference is plus $480,500. And for pensions and FICA, once again, $71,200. For a total in the water fund of $552,000 increase in just these two areas of personnel costs. So that's $1.5 million in a one-year increase just in wages and pensions, which I believe is unprecedented. There are a lot of problems with this, but I'll pick out a couple. One, you're going to have to do this next year, probably about the same amount, my calculation is about $1.2 million more next fiscal year, and that's if you don't hire, you know, more people. But I think you have, so it's going to have to be more, and I don't know how much more you can put on the water department. Okay? Two, particularly this half a million dollars sent to the water department to take care of wages and pensions there that used to be taken care of in the general fund. That's what gave you the right to say that you have a $500,000 surplus in the general fund this year, but it's not real. And $500,000 putting to, you know, I'd like for you to drive around and take a look at some of the streets that we have in DeKalb. I personally live on a street of modest homes, but they're real cute and they're very well-maintained. But if my road were in snow cover today, nobody's fault, it's heading into washboard-quality territory. So something is very, very wrong here, that we've got these analyses and we're missing the point, and people are just doing this because they want a new HR director, when actually staff reductions are called for. Because my neighborhood and a lot of other neighborhoods in this town, it's not just about my street, are keeping up, they're holding up their end of the bargain, and you're not. It's a matter of priorities. And frankly, I think what it comes down to is a choice. Are you going to serve the staff, or are you going to serve the people? That's how I see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I would note that we do have an upcoming topic on city council agenda of street maintenance. Am I correct, city manager?
We will be, yeah, we'll be discussing that as part of the budget process.
We'll be coming back to that topic. And I would just emphasize that city staff and council is focused on serving the people.
Tom Teresinski, 2nd ward. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing public participation during this part of your meeting. I think that's a step forward. Also, I think there's a lot of detail that was presented and a lot of background gone into the actions and the positive steps being taken by staff, and I think that's very positive and commendable, that we are looking at efficiencies and effectiveness. I guess, as a member of the Finance Advisory Committee, and I'm speaking as a citizen this evening, but having had that detail and background, some of the work that we look at is really looking at the total process and the totals, and that is looking at the big picture. There's a substantial amount of detail, but when you step all the way back and you look at what's occurring with total compensation, you know, going up at the range, and we've talked about this before, in the neighborhood of, you know, between 4% and 6% total with healthcare and pension obligations and so forth, and a revenue stream at 2%, or if we're lucky, you know, we're going to see this continual push to the downside and potential deficits. The '16 budget, as I look at it, we're adding back some of the labor costs for the water transfers and some of the other accounting changes, looks like a real increase of about 6% year-over-year, budget-to-budget. That's looking at, right out of the budget book. So I know that's not sustainable, and I urge you to really think through before making any further hiring commitments. You know, there was a discussion of a freeze during the whole budget process as a possible way to manage this. I think that is a very practical way in the short term until you see next year's budget, where hopefully we'll see that five-year long-term budget put together, and we can see these trends and see what other actions may be necessary besides those that have been taken thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I want to thank everybody for being here, and thank you for the people who came ahead of me, and it was very informative. One of the things I, I really only have one thing to point out, is that when somebody says, and I wasn't going to talk, but I decided to. I hear this number bandied about for efficiency, labor efficiency, we increase the number of hours per a salaried worker for an hour and a half, and that's improving our efficiency. Well, that doesn't actually improve your efficiency, it's mathematically inconsistent. Math says if I have the same person doing the same amount of work, if they're doing it an hour and a half longer, they're probably not going to increase the amount of actual efficiency, especially a salaried worker. In the case of the salaried worker, generally, you're working on a project, and you're working your project to the end of this project. And you're not going to gain any workplace efficiency for an hour-and-a-half increase or whatever it was, per person, or two-and-a-half hours, I believe was the number. What you're really creating mathematically is a lower efficiency because you have the same amount of people, increased amount of hours, and basically doing the same amount of work. I've been an engineer in corporate life for quite a few years, and I've been an engineer in state life for quite a few years, and I have managed projects and jobs and billions of dollars' worth of stuff. And I'm telling you, that's not the way you're going to calculate your workplace efficiency. I mean, really, you have to have less people doing more work, or you're going to have to do the same amount of people working less hours and doing twice as much work, and that's not going to happen. So you're not calculating these numbers right. And you need to go back on a lot of your efficiencies. A lot of the stuff I heard just a little bit ago was, it was good work, but you increased the amount of labor to do this, and so you came in and got some great stuff happening here. I commend the fire department and the police department, they're doing some great stuff. But that does increase the amount of labor costs at the same time. You don't get software advantages without labor. More software you implement, the more labor that software is going to take to maintain it and a higher level of technical skill. And that means you're going to be paying these people more. And I'm not arguing that's a terrible thing, I'm just saying, when you calculate your efficiencies, okay, be a little bit more straightforward, and you might lose a little efficiency number here or there. But it makes more sense to somebody like myself, who, I don't know if anybody wants to challenge me on math credentials, but it makes a little bit more sense to someone like me, when you're talking, make sure your mathematics is correct. And that's all I'm going to say. I'm not picking on anybody, I just want you to understand that there are, there are things in economics and efficiencies that aren't the same as what you're saying. And then that causes consternation amongst people who do know what you're saying and gets them upset because they think you're trying to push something that isn't right. It's just probably bad communication, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wishing to speak at this point in the committee of the hall? Seeing none. City manager, should we move to executive session between the two meetings?
What I would recommend, mayor, is to defer the two items from this committee of the whole meeting to the city council. So do them during the city council portion of the meeting.
Okay.
If that, I mean, because we have it covered, executive session is listed on that, on the city council agenda, but when we get into the city council meeting, just my recommendation is to be clear and read these items for executive session or that portion of the meeting.
Okay. We will do that. Recognizing the hour, I would entertain a motion to adjourn committee of the hall. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Norreco, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will convene the regular meeting at the 6 o'clock hour, then having about a six-minute break now. Thank you.[1313.15]
I was in the United States Army for thirty-three years before I became a civilian. I like what I'm doing, what I'm doing. Target has a lot of interesting change and transformation going on, and we are a centerpiece of some change happening with our supply chain. So, I guess I do this here. Let's see. Oh, yeah, look at that. All right. First, a little bit about the company. We were formerly known as the Dayton Hudson Company. Goes all the way back to nineteen oh-two. In nineteen sixty-two, Target opened its first four stores in Minneapolis, correct, in Minnesota. And at that time, we had thirteen-hundred-and-forty-nine employees, and today, we number about three-hundred-and-forty-thousand employees. We have eighteen-hundred-and-five stores in forty-nine states in the District of Columbia. Target.com, our online business, is the fastest-growing part of the Target Corporation. We had a very good holiday season. And finally, what you see here on this screen is our brand: Expect More, Pay Less. Target embodies the values of quality and exceptional service. This is the commitment. This is the signature. This is the promise we make to everybody who chooses to shop at Target. Here are some interesting facts about careers in the supply chain and what the outlook is for the future. I would say it's a very optimistic outlook with growth potential and a lot of opportunities for those interested in careers in this field. We are one of the eight-out-of-ten companies you see up here that determined it needs to significantly transform its supply chain to remain competitive. Retail today is probably more competitive than it's ever been. Our competitors aren't applauding every time Target does something cool. They're saying, "No, that's not good. We've got to figure out a way to do better than they do." So it's a very competitive environment right now. Our CEO, Brian Cornell, came onboard about eighteen months ago, and he came in with a transformational mindset. So not only is Target's supply chain undergoing significant transformation, but just about every facet of the company's operations is undergoing some major change, from vendor operations, merchandise operations, planning, et cetera. And it's all so we stay relevant and competitive in a very competitive environment. Some gee-whiz numbers about Target's supply chain. We've got thirty-eight various distribution centers, nine fulfillment centers. We've got about sixteen-thousand team members who just work in our supply chain. And as you can see, we move a lot of cartons, about a billion total for twenty-fifteen. Fun fact: The fifty-million-square-feet of warehouse capacity you see up there is larger than the nation of Monaco and could fill Central Park twice. As I said, gee-whiz numbers. So how does product get to a guest? Well, traditionally, it's been a very linear system: supplier to distribution center to store, and then guest comes to store to purchase. Today, it's a much more complex and networked process because of our guest demands. Those demands are no longer linear in nature. We have developed and are developing a variety of ways to get product to guests when and where they want it. And I would ask you to think for a second. How many different ways did you purchase gifts this recent holiday season? I, myself, did not only do so in a store. I did so online, did so with a mobile device. There are a lot of ways that customers, guests, as we call them, are seeking to purchase product, and we're looking at each and every way. So as you can see from the complexity of the lower half of this screen, this is quite a logistics challenge to continue to fulfill our guest demands. This shows all the various nodes in Target's supply chain. All the red dots are stores. The blue squares are regional distribution centers. And as you can see, it's a very extensive network. And we do consider our stores to be part of our supply chain because we now ship from stores. You can now order online and pick up in a store. We are shipping directly to guests from our distribution centers. So it's a supply chain that's undergoing significant transformation. It's robust. The interesting part here is that the three green circles represent what I'm going to explain to you, and that is an upstream distribution center, UDC. You can see one on the East Coast, one on the West Coast, and one here in the Midwest in DeKalb. Some facts about Target in Illinois. We have ninety stores in the state, and we have two distribution facilities, one here, obviously, in DeKalb on Macon Drive, and one in Evansville, Illinois, which is a fulfillment center for our online business. So what is a UDC? UDC Upstream Distribution Center is a Target-specific term. The upstream concept is fairly broad in retail. You can see the retailers who use some version of this concept. But the main point is this: An upstream DC's purpose is to get merchandise to guests, merchandise that doesn't have a very mature demand history to it, or is seasonal, or is regional. We don't sell a lot of flip-flops here in DeKalb this time of year, but they sell like crazy down in Arizona and Florida and so forth. So it's regional merchandise. It's promotional merchandise. It's fad or trendy merchandise. But unlike coffee filters, unlike dial soap, unlike things for which there's a very robust demand history, upstream distribution centers will handle all those things for which there is not a very significant demand history. And most of those things are apparel and accessories. And the process begins with a requirement generated by a store. And that's essentially what an upstream distribution center is. And so you're asking probably, "Why are we doing this?" Great question. On average, we are about twenty-five percent out of stock in apparel and accessories items, on average. And so even though you may go into a store and see a full rack of shirts, how many times have you gone in and said, "Ah, there's no medium," or "They're out of larges"? And so it's tough to forecast demand and maintain sufficient stockage in a lot of apparel and accessories items. So the big reason we're doing this is to drive out-of-stocks down. Like you, when I go into a store looking for what I'm looking for, and there's an empty space on the shelf, that is not a satisfying experience for me. The second reason is, as you know, inventory is money, and so pooling inventory, as we're going to do in these three facilities, will save us money. We also generate capacity in the network by investing in just three buildings, again, West Coast, East Coast, and here, versus generating this capacity in all of our distribution centers. And then the big thing that this also gives us is what we'll all call agility. Last year, when Buffalo had about three feet of snow dumped on it, guess what quickly went out of stock in stores? Ice melt, snow shovels, scrapers, et cetera. And the system is not designed to rapidly replenish those things, nor is their robustness of supply in the network to get those things to them in a sufficient manner. The Minneapolis Lynx, the WNBA team, recently had a promotional night where they asked everybody to wear white as a show of support. Well, guess what Target quickly ran out of in Minneapolis: white T-shirts. And again, the system didn't have the capacity to rapidly replenish that. With this concept, this upstream distribution concept, we all... So overall, this helps us achieve better balance of inventory across our network. Some quick facts about our facility on Macon Drive. It's about ten years old, and thanks to the city for its support, you know, twelve years ago, I think, when Target first approached about, I think I'm one behind there, sorry about that. There we go, approached the city about opening a distribution center here. So we're coming up on ten years. We've got about a million and a half square feet, and as you can see, a significant trailer capacity. It's also a very highly automated facility. So here's what we do today. We are a regional distribution center. We're one of twenty-six regional distribution centers. We do direct store replenishment of all general merchandise for forty-nine stores in five states. About two years ago, that was about seventy stores in five states, but they've been slowly redistributing our stores to others, given what we have coming up here in a few months. And our team member head count, including executives, is about three-hundred-and-fifty team members. So where are we going to here in a few months? Well, we are going to become an upstream distribution center, and as I mentioned, we're specializing in those hard-to-forecast items. We will transition in early May to the upstream distribution center. This represents about a fifty-million-dollar construction investment in our facility alone. But company-wide, the three facilities that Target is transitioning to upstream distribution centers represents a greater-than-two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar investment in transforming our supply chain. So this is a big deal. This is a very big deal for Target to make this kind of investment here in our community. We will be one of three UDCs, as I mentioned. We will serve about one-third of the United States, one-third of our eighteen-hundred-and-five stores, and we will do so by shipping to the nine regional distribution centers represented by the smaller bullseyes on here. So we will ship to as far away as Texas once we go live as an upstream distribution center. We will ship two stores via these regional distribution centers. So we will put product in a carton. It'll go to the RDC. It will be quickly cross-stocked and catch a ride on a store-bound trailer to fulfill our requirement there. And the great news is that we are increasing our head count to over eight-hundred team members. We are more than doubling our head count here in very short order. So that's the big news. That's why I asked to come talk to you tonight. We're hiring. We're hiring in a major way. The hiring will take place predominantly in the April-May timeframe. We're hiring various skill sets: warehouse workers who will need to be able to operate powered equipment. We're hiring operations team members who will primarily do packaging and shipping, as well as mechanics, clerical positions, and leaders. So more than doubling of our head count in a short amount of time is a significant challenge for us. There's a lot of information available at the website there, target.com/careers. We're very excited about that. And Target offers some of the best benefits in retail, including insurance, including competitive pay, team member discounts, and many other significant perks. So we're pretty excited, and we're very confident that here in DeKalb County and the surrounding areas, we've got the talent that we need to make going live a reality for us here in early May. Why work for Target? Well, there are a lot of reasons. One is that we're one of the most reputable, admired, and diverse companies. We're on a lot of lists, as you can see. What I really admire about Target, and coming out of the military, one of the things that attracted me to them was that since nineteen forty-six, as you can see, Target's given five percent of its profits back into the communities it operates. Today, company-wide, that equals four million dollars a week. Four million dollars a week is what Target reinvests in the communities in which it operates. Very proud of that. Here in this local community, I have the pleasure of approving grants to various entities here in the city. Let me tell you what some of those are: Fidham Soup, Kishawaki Oncology, Northern Illinois Food Bank, DeKalb and Sycamore Police Departments were very active in the Heroes and Helpers program, you know, Shop with a Cop. I know it's not the best way to put it, but some may be familiar with that. Very successful program this year. And also National Night Out, as well as Neighbor's House and Adventure Works have all been the recipients of grants from us in twenty-fifteen. So a lot of great things happening, and not to mention the volunteer hours. We're on track to have our volunteers, our team members, volunteer about two-thousand hours. All that is an investment in the community in which we're very proud and very happy to live and work. And so the reason I'm sharing this with you is that I ask you to share information about the upstream distribution center, support our hiring plans, encourage people to check us out. We've got a lot of opportunities, as I mentioned, refer candidates to us, and share feedback with me about Target. My number's on there. If you've got a concern or something you want to express to me, please do so. But I was very excited to share with you tonight some awesome news, some great employment opportunities for interested people here in the county. And I'd love to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions from public or council?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm thrilled, and I congratulate Target. And one question: Where will you be doing the interviewing and so forth?
Yep. We just paid a visit today to Kishawaki College, so we will having, there'll be more information coming out, but our first career fair, April fifteenth and sixteenth, will be at Kishawaki College. And we will publish this in a variety of ways, but we just finalized that today. We will have subsequent, smaller career fairs, probably at our facility, but we're still sorting out some of those details.
Thank you.
But we will be very aggressive in advertising that and promoting it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mike, as mayor of City Council, City of DeKalb, I'd like to thank you and ask you to pass on to the entire Target Corporation appreciation for the investment, in the past investment in DeKalb and the future investment in our community. You're a substantial industrial warehouse distribution center employer component in our community and adds significantly to the quality of life in DeKalb. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Will do.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, moving on, then, we have fire department flashover training video overview that Chief Hicks will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of tonight's DeKalb, probably DeKalb presentation, I want to share a unique opportunity that our department went through back in November. Last November, we took the opportunity to participate in a live training exercise. We brought Sauk Valley College up here with their flashover simulator, and we were able to bring many community members through that training program. Participating were firefighters from Cortland Waterman, Shabmin at Maple Park in Malta, and also we had NIU staff there, members, and members from the NIU, or Daily Chronicle. Also, Dr. Chuluk from the Police and Fire Commission showed up. And we also had our own mayor, John Ray Alderperson, Kate Noriko, and our own city attorney, Dean Frieders. I want to thank the Daily Chronicle for the work they did on this video. It was an excellent video. It probably hit the most hits we've ever had on our Facebook. So thanks to Brittany and Danell for the work they did on that. I'm going to introduce our deputy chief of training, Jeff McMaster, who's going to explain what happened during the video. And so thank you to all that attend.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Chronicle did a great job really showing what the firefighters go through as far as what the training and what they're up to every day. So it's going to show in the video of what they did, and then we'll give you a wrap-up. We wanted to take the opportunity to work with the firefighters as far as fire behavior. Firefighters practice pulling hoses, extrication, climbing ladders, but very rarely do they actually get to witness fire behavior. When there's a real fire, the firefighters are busy putting out the fire. This simulator with Sauk Valley Community College and through Illinois Fire Store, we were able to bring it out. They brought their own instructors. And what the firefighters were able to do is go inside and actually watch the formation of fire, look and see how smoke moves, and how airflow actually affects the fire behavior inside the building. So the firefighters actually get to sit in the survey. That's why this type of training is critical. It's something that we have not done here in DeKalb before. We lack the facilities for it. So it's nice that Sauk Valley had this mobile unit, that they're able to bring it out and the instructors, and actually teach the firefighters about fire behavior.
During this exercise, a few points, I'm going to have you turn that light on. The reason for that, let's go back to smoke reading. What happens, right, when that fire starts to take off? What are the conditions inside? Speeds up, doesn't it? The smoke condition speeds up. Air current is going to come in low, high heat coming out the top. So it's going to go from an area of high pressure to an area of low pressure. This is the way it works. We'll see, and we'll manipulate this with the up vent, and also with the doors, okay, today, and you'll be able to see some of those things. Depending on how this goes with the wind, which isn't too bad right now, we'll have fire coming down at some point, the right side or left side of the box. As we go through the evolution, you'll see incipient growth, free burning, and we'll have fire starting to roll out here. Because we have so many folks in here today, probably the first two next to me are the ones that are going to see the fire.
Now, what you're looking at here is a thermal imager. We have one of these on each of our fire engines. And what this does is this allows the firefighters to see through the smoke, but you don't actually see objects. What you see are their heat signatures, whether it's actual fire, person, equipment. As you can see, it also has a thermometer where it shows the temperature. Right there, it's at eight-hundred degrees. It can get up to over fifteen-hundred degrees in structure fires.
I've got a better appreciation for the investment in the equipment, in the cost of the equipment, the importance of keeping equipment current for the protection of firefighters. After all, they're in there on the front line. It makes you appreciate what they're
Now, this wasn't an easy training, okay? Now, why do we say this? Because you're going to take a group of firefighters, you're going to put them in a steel box. You're going to close the doors. You're going to set a fire. And then you're not going to give them tools. You're not going to give them a hose. And then you're going to sit them, sit there, and tell them to watch the fire, okay? Not easy. Your firefighters, when there's a fire, they're ready to go to work. They're out there doing the job. However, that was the beauty of this training, is they didn't have to go to work. They can sit there and watch, and they can watch the development of fire growth and spread. They can watch the development of thermal layers, the formation of smoke layers, witness an actual flashovers when everything spontaneously combusts. And they got to watch how airflow affects fires. And what people in the fire service don't realize is that the opening of doors and windows during a structure fire actually makes it more difficult for firefighters to control the fire, and it also makes the conditions more dangerous for firefighters. So that's how valuable this training was. But all that said, it was a great training. The guys had a lot of fun. Everybody learned a lot. Hopefully, the participants enjoyed it. And I'd like to thank Chief Hicks for making it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions, Jeff? Alderman, Noriko?
I just want to say, it was one of the most amazing experiences of my life. I mean, you really, it really did impress upon me the importance of good equipment, the fitness level of the fire department personnel. I'm telling you, when you put on forty-five pounds and then put on, they give you that oh-so-precious air pack, you know, it's significant. And then, you know, to sit there and, you know, feel the heat and, you know, when I looked up and all I could see was orange and yellow, it made a very good story for a Christmas dinner.
Good. Good. Any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Chief and Jeff. Well, moving next to our consent agenda, we have items on our consent agenda this evening. I will ask, are there any items anyone wishes to remove? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the items on consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman. No, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. I would like to note, this evening, I'm going to begin the practice of reviewing by topic or title the various items that we will be approving on consent agenda. Minutes of the whole and regular meeting of December fourteenth, the accounts payable through, and payroll through January eleventh in the amount of two million five-hundred-seven-thousand-eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, year-to-date revenues, expenditures for general fund through November of two thousand fifteen, the investment bank balance summary through November fifteen, resolution two thousand sixteen-one, receiving and filing the consolidated annual financial report audit report and management letter for FY two thousand fifteen, resolution two thousand sixteen-two, authorizing the payment of travel expenses to GovHR USA in the amount of seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, and the ratification of our two thousand sixteen schedule of meetings.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do believe we might have skipped over E-four, public participation.
Thank you. I even have that asterisk. Let me... E-four, I do have to register to speak to these items. Let me ask for, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda, although, well, roll call. Let me do a roll call, and then I'll come back to that, public participation.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay. I do have three, two individuals wishing to speak to the public participation.
Happy New Year, Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just a couple of items. First of all, this Saturday, Ward Five had a meeting right here at City Hall. Kate Noriko gathered her flock amongst the fifth ward. It was a good meeting. And hopefully, one of the things that went through my mind as I was sitting there and participating and listening to people speak and to Kate make the presentations and answer questions, I would hope that other aldermen would follow suit, and I would hope that we could see meetings like this going on in all of the wards throughout the city. Very good idea, very good opportunity for people to exchange information and ideas. I think it was very, very productive. And I thank you, Kate. You've set a good example. Fifth ward is always a good ward. There you go. And the other item that I've been concerned about is TIF, the TIF monies. I would urge the council, this is a new year, and hopefully, with the new year, some ideas and concerns that we've heard in the past can be implemented in this new year. We need to do some long-range planning on the TIF monies before decisions are made on specific projects. We really need to sit down as a community and have a list of what it is that we want to do in our community, and then see how those TIF monies can be best utilized. It seems that over the years, perhaps, TIF throughout the state maybe has not been used as productively as it should be. And certainly, discussing and gathering ideas is not a bad thing to do, since we are running pretty much close to the time that the TIF monies are going to be ending, and those decisions need to be made. One suggestion that I would have, and I did make that suggestion at the joint review board meeting, though I don't know if anybody really listened to it, but I'll make the suggestion again, it would be very good for the public and for the council, the decision-makers, to get a list of all of the TIF projects that have been done since TIF's inception. Just a running list of what projects were done and how much money was expended. That would give council and the public an idea of what had happened in the past, to kind of use that as a guidepost and a guideline. And if at all possible, if the staff could analyze the economic impact, since that was kind of the whole idea behind TIF, what is the impact, the positive impact of that to the community, it would be nice to do a little bit of an analysis of how each of those projects impacted the community, whether in a positive way or a negative way. Times are tough, and we don't want to make them tougher. We want to make them better. And, you know, some of the opportunities that we heard here today with businesses coming in, you know, we want to enhance our economic development and our economic stability. So look at that, please, and, you know, if we could do that, maybe post those projects, like, out here in the hall. There's a nice big space over there. Plenty of room for a map and for a list. Thank you, and Happy New Year. More meetings.
Okay, I have three items tonight. First is the committee of the whole schedule for the year that was approved tonight. There's a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday that's not on the list. The potential for Open Meetings Act problems... The potential for Open Meetings Act problems with that, I would suggest that if it were renamed, you know, put special somewhere in there on that Committee of the Whole on the fourteenth, that that would probably take care of that. Second item, I am, I attend, I'm a Fourth Warder, but Fourth Ward doesn't have, you know, Ward meetings. And I attended Alderman Noriko's meeting on Saturday. And I second what Bessie said. It was fantastic, well-conducted. There were at least twenty-five people that attended, maybe more who sneaked in late. And no holds barred. We asked whatever we wanted, and the Alderman answered what she could and took notes about the things that she wanted to follow up on, and has already followed up on a couple of things that I brought up. Thank you very, very much. Would love to see more of that kind of interaction. My, my third item is, is kind of difficult. But, Mayor and Council, I need to, I need to challenge the city manager's claim of residency in DeKalb. And I'm gonna just stick to the facts. Fact, the DeKalb city manager is obligated by her contract to live in the city of DeKalb. However, fact, the city manager owns no property in DeKalb. She does own property in North Aurora. She takes the homestead exemption for owner-occupied property in North Aurora. I do not understand why she's taking the homestead exemption if she lives in DeKalb. Fact, the house that is owned in North Aurora is not on the market. As far as I can tell, it has never been on the market during the time that the city manager has been employed here. If it's being rented out or something, that's fine, but that brings us back then to the puzzle of the homestead exemption. Another fact, that even though the city manager supposedly lives in DeKalb and supposedly has lived in DeKalb for about a year, she is still a registered voter in Kane County. Anybody can, can verify these facts. There are Kane County tax records, DeKalb County tax records, Kane County voter information, and Trulia to find out what's been on the market and what hasn't. What we can't verify is where the city manager sleeps at night and hangs out on the weekends. I believe that this is an issue for the residents of DeKalb. I think, you know, if, if somebody's receiving a tax benefit that they should not, that that's something that needs to be examined. If somebody is violating a contract, that's something that needs to be addressed. Therefore, I am calling on the city council to investigate the residency claim and to take appropriate action. We really need, the people of DeKalb really need someone who is jumping in with both feet, not hedging their bets, one-hundred percent committed to the city, and has some skin in the game. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Misty Hajishik, I assume you want to speak at this point?
Yes.
I'll be very brief. I have to echo the, what some of the others have said tonight about the Fifth Ward meeting that took place. I very much enjoyed it. We had a lot of really good citizen input, and I look forward to hearing, having another one of those, and to hearing your responses back to what the citizens said. As you can tell, the Fifth Ward is a very knowledgeable group of people, as I mentioned at the meeting, and we really want to know things. So, the more information you can give us, and the better the communication, the, the better we can work together, so. And the other thing I wanted to point out tonight is just a point of caution for the mayor, and that is that when you accidentally skip public participation and moved on to the motion to accept the consent agenda, you denied everyone in the room a chance to speak on that consent agenda or anything that might have been on it, because you've already passed it now. And if I wanted to address one of those resolutions or something on there, I, I could not do that, because you've already voted on it. And so, I just wanted to give you that caution.
Misty, what we voted on was accepting the consent agenda topics.
Mm-hmm.
I'm coming back to a second motion that will pass those items on consent. And that's the reason I put public participation in the midst of those two motions. I apologize, having overlooked it. It was not intentional. I appreciate Attorney Frieder's bringing it to my attention. Thank you. Moving then to consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the items on consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to items for separate action then. Resolution two thousand sixteen-three, authorizing an intergovernmental tax increment financing agreement with DeKalb Community School District Number four-twenty-eight in an amount not to exceed two million dollars for the purpose of financing facility improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion. Jan Dietrich?
Yep, Mayor, Council. This item was first considered by the Council at their December eleventh Committee of the Whole meeting, where it received direction, staff received direction to move forward. Earlier in two thousand fifteen, the DeKalb School District approached city staff with a request for TIF assistance to make improvements to two of their schools that are located within the two, the two, the city's two TIF districts. Founders Elementary is in TIF Two, and Clinton Rosette Middle School is in TIF Number One. The agreement has been approved by the school district, and so now it is our turn to approve on our end, and I'm happy to address any questions or concerns that you may have in reference to it.
Questions of Jan? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried. Resolution two thousand sixteen-four, adopting a policy to pass all credit card fees onto the user for both online and over-the-counter transactions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Jacobson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. I'll turn to Finance Director Haley.
So, city staff is looking at more options for online payments with credit cards and over-the-card, and over-the-counter type payments. Currently, you can pay online for a water bill, and as Chief Lowery was talking about, you can pay online for the tow fines. But, there's no option currently to pay online for building permits, hangar rentals at the airport, and parking tickets. So, we would like to expand that option. In doing so, I noted that water bill payments currently, the city absorbs all the fees in-house, which is about twenty thousand dollars that the water fund absorbs each year. So, if we're going to incorporate more options of payments, I would like to pass that fee on to the user that's paying for that, that item. The tow fines, we are currently passing that fee on. The fuel sales that are, that you can use credit card for at the airport, they've incorporated the fee into the cost of the fuel. However, water bill payments isn't, we are absorbing that fee, and with the taking of credit cards for building permits, which can be very, very expensive, the fee is based on a percentage of the actual item. It could become very costly to the general fund. So, with that said, I did confirm that we can pass that fee on to users both over-the-counter and online. We just could not charge a fee anything higher than, you know, we couldn't profit on it. So, we would just have to pass whatever fee we get charged on to that user. And I would be happy to answer any questions. I can tell you, it would also be debit cards if someone wanted to use a debit card. There's a fee. I think it's a different fee. There's two different wire systems that the credit card agencies run those transactions through, and the debit card transactions are a little less expensive, but there still is a fee.
Questions of Kathy? Alderman Markort?
So, but not all the fees are based on the dollar amount?
It's a sliding scale based on the dollar amount of what you're paying for.
Okay. So, we would have some sort of chart that would say?
Yes.
Between here and here, you're gonna get charged an additional?
Yep.
Part for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Other discussion? Alderman Favor?
I have two questions. First is, are we using, are we utilizing the same merchant card processing services for all of city transactions, or do we, are we utilizing different companies?
So, we actually, our financial software, MSI, does not allow for any online credit card payments other than water billing. So, while we have parking tickets that we run through our financial software, you can't pay online for those. You can pay on, online for water billing. That's the only resident portal MSI offers for payments. So, building permits, we would not be able to use that, their provider either. Part of the analysis is to try to streamline it and use one provider. I know the police department is using GovPay, I believe is what they're called. They've been very happy with them. While there's not currently an interface into the financial software, it's something we would like to work with them on, so that it's not more of a manual process, that we're still gonna be able to interface that with our financial software as well. So, it's part of our analysis.
Okay. And then, the second, is there a, like, a process improvement? If I pay my water bill online, does that then eliminate a staff member from having to do the data entry for the water bill recording?
We have a lockbox process, so, no, it could decrease our lockbox fees. So, most of our water bill payments are done through our bank. They process those payments. So, if you're mailing it, or, you know, we do process the online payments. It's an upload, but I, it would not eliminate a position, not, not for building permits. We only have one building permit administrative person currently, so we wouldn't be able to eliminate her. And then, hangar rentals is part of our accounts receivable, which is a pretty big job as well. So, no, I, I don't foresee it eliminating a position.
Okay. Okay. Other questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. I would note, and I apologize, I overlooked a speaker request on the previous item. Resolution two thousand sixteen-three has been in front of Council, has passed. At this point, there could be a motion to reconsider that resolution. Therefore, I'm going to ask Dwayne Brown for his comments at this point. And the motion could be reconsidered if anyone on the prevailing side would wish to reconsider that motion. Dwayne?
Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. I just wanted to go back a little bit. When the District four-twenty-eight floated the hundred-and-ten million dollars in bonds to finance the eighty-million-dollar DeKalb High School and the Cortland School, they were granted a grant from the State of Illinois in October of two thousand eleven for ten million dollars. So, instead of taking this money and paying down the debt, they went on a spending spree, and they spent it all. Now, they're asking for up to two million dollars now in tax increment financing money, which I seem to think is kind of unusual, because we couldn't get it for the library. We had to increase the levy. Now, the school district wants it. We're gonna pay, we're gonna pay now, because they're gonna have to extend the debt, District four-twenty-eight. Out, over more years, we're gonna pay either with a tax increase, or we're gonna pay in time. And I, I'm against the two, two-million-dollar increase in, in the TIF funds right now, because if the library can't get it, why is the school district any better? I, I don't see the point in that. I, I, I think we're gonna, I think the taxpayers here are gonna have to say no to District four-twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Moving on then to ordinance two thousand sixteen-one, amending Chapter fifty-four, Financial Administration, Section fifty-four dot oh-four, Budget Officer, Section fifty-four dot oh-five, Municipal and Fiscal Year, and Section fifty-four dot oh-six, Annual Budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. Discussion. I'll turn to Director Haley.
Thank you. On November tenth, and actually, several Finance Advisory Committee meetings, we met and discussed this topic of changing the fiscal year from July one to June thirtieth over to a calendar year, January to December. The Finance Committee did vote on November tenth with a three to two vote in favor of making this switch. So, staff is now bringing this forward to Council. We did list the advantages of this change, as well as the disadvantages, and I do have Director Holdman here as well, because some of the largest advantages are for Public Works. I will touch on some of the advantages. One, I think we saw through this tax levy season that it would help make the tax levy process a little less confusing, and tying it in with the current budget that we're also talking about at that same time. I will start by saying the bidding and contracting signing process for construction projects typically takes at least thirty days, and I think I will defer to Director Holdman to continue on with that advantage.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor, Council. With regard to this changing our fiscal year to the calendar year, Public Works Department does support that, primarily because of the advantage that we'll see in bidding our construction contracts. Right now, our process begins once the budget is approved. So, we then have funds allocated for our construction year. That means that we start July first in that process. We have to advertise those bids, receive and evaluate those bids, and then contract with the lowest and most favorable bid. So, we're looking at mid-August to late August before we're even asking the contractor to mobilize and to secure their materials and equipment. With this schedule, contractors are forced to work us into their schedule, because as you can imagine, contractors are most hungry for the work as the season begins, and that's in March and April. And so, if we were to move our fiscal year to a calendar year, that would enable us to start in January, be out to bid in February or March with everyone else, and be in a very competitive environment for receiving those. very competitive environment for receiving those services. And I believe that would result in significant savings for the city, and so that we'll get that advantage of that competition. Thank you.
So some additional advantages are the motor fuel tax, MFT audits that the state of Illinois IDOT conducts are on a calendar year basis, so it'll sync with this, with the MFT audits. Certainly, some accounting items such as annual W2s and 1099 tax forms are based on a calendar year will coincide nicely with the fiscal year. Another, I think, large item is year-end for our rollover for vacation and floating holidays and comp time is December, so at that point, people have to use it or lose it. We'll have a lower liability on the books that we would be booking during our audit process, which is a good thing. Reports to the public, you know, while we'll have that one short year, eventually, I think calendar year reports are much more intuitive. The state budget year is July to June, and their budget does impact ours, although I know we've all seen how it doesn't matter really when their budget is because they haven't passed one, but it certainly will reduce any, you know, you know, we'll know a little bit ahead of time, hopefully, if they pass on time, what some funding choices that they make might, might impact our budget. The current, currently, the fiscal year budget is finalized in the spring, and elected officials are sworn in at the council meeting in May. A calendar year budget would allow the new council to have more input the next budget year, much sooner. And true IMRF pension rate for the entire year would be known and could be budgeted for accordingly. Some of the disadvantages, I think, are also apparent. Budget planning would begin during construction season for public works personnel. We would have, we would do a six-month budget, so we would have a budget from July 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2016, and have an audit for that budget, and then have another, and then begin our 12-month budget, January to December of 2017, where we would have another audit. So we would be doing a budget and a budget and an audit simultaneously. It will be a challenge with our financial software, additional costs may be incurred. I know that MSI can do this. I, I did this with MS, with the use of MSI in Roselle, so it is, it's possible for them to handle this conversion. Property tax dollars would not be collected for solid six months in the fiscal year, given the potential for cash flow concerns. However, the city, you know, the largest source of our revenue is sales tax dollars, so we get that monthly. And I think that mitigates some of those cash flow concerns. Property tax revenue is currently only 12.6% of the total revenues in the general fund. And I guess unless anyone wants to add anything. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions? Alderman Noriko.
I'm curious if Director Holdman knows the extent to which, or the frequency, that there are other municipalities out there who also, which also have a July fiscal year beginning, so that we aren't the only ones trying to get the attention of, you know, vendors at that time of year.
Alderman, I'm not aware of any other communities in, in this area that are on the, the July fiscal year. My experience has always been with the calendar year.
I would also add to that, from my experience of what I've seen, not only in the municipalities I've served, but the trend in the Chicago area is if there is a different date of fiscal year, it's usually May, May 1st. When I was in Lombard, it was June 1st. Sometimes it goes back to the history of the community, but there has been a trend in local government seeing more that are going towards the January 1 fiscal year. I think as staff, what we've tried to provide to both the Finance Advisory Committee and to the council, the pros and cons, from staff's perspective, we recommend it for a variety of reasons, as outlined by both Directors Haley and Holdman. And part of it comes to, you know, one of the things that might, was touched on in the memo, and, and this is just the direct feedback that I know I received from both Alderman Marquardt and Alderman Noriko after you were sworn in, is the difficulty of coming right into being a council member and being responsible for then going into the budget. By changing it to a fiscal year, it allows more time for future Aldermen to be able to understand the complexities of, of everything relating to the council. It's ultimately a policy decision on your end. It's, this is going to create more work for staff on the front end, but long-term, we feel it's in the best interest of the community. It will lower our costs and increase our efficiencies.
Thank you.
Other discussion? So, Alderman Marquardt.
So we would be doing, essentially, we would be doing a budget and property tax levy at the same time, kind of in December, if we were to switch. And that property tax then levy would then be incorporated into the current fiscal year, as opposed to right now, the property tax levy that we passed, we don't get until the following fiscal budget year.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll turn to public participation. Bessie, for Annapolis.
Teacher knows how to get attention, eventually. The Finance Advisory Committee is not jumping for joy on this one. Okay? A lot of your more mature and knowledgeable people on the Finance Advisory Commission were not in favor, you know that Kathy, you know that too, because it would make for a more confusing transition. There's enough going on in the budget, and there are enough questions that have been posed over the last several months regarding the budget, that you don't need yet one more layer of confusion. As far as people who are running for office, becoming familiar, the process begins way back in December, and the elections aren't until, what, about April? And that gives those people ample time, and that's one of the things that candidates do. They become apprised of the various functions of the city. As a matter of fact, sometimes the candidates end up being more knowledgeable about the budget than the actual sitting council, which is good. And I can't believe that this city has survived for as many years as it has, and I can't believe they got you on board on this one. With letting contracts and, and, and planning, all this time, they've been doing it backwards? And now all of a sudden, this is the saving grace? What's going on here? This, this should not happen. This is going to cause a little bit more confusion as far as the transition. It's going to be really hard to compare, indeed, if there have been savings, and if the things that you've been told by your staff are as accurate as they claim they are. I, I, I just can't believe that this is being done.
Okay. Thank you, Bessie.
Yeah, right.
Further discussion from council? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carried, and that is before us at first reading. It'll come back to our next meeting in second reading. Ordinance 2016-2, adding Section 52.92 unlawful assemblies to Chapter 52 offenses against public peace, safety, and morals to this city's municipal code. And this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt. I'll turn to City Attorney Frieders.
Evening, Council. It's nice to see you from a little bit different perspective. I'm here tonight with Sergeant Woodruff from our police department. We wanted to, on the front side of these next two ordinances, talk to you a little bit about the background for them, the motivation of the city in developing them, and the research that we've done in putting them together. When Sergeant Woodruff comes up and talks, I'd ask him to take a moment to reflect on some of the training that he's had specific to these issues, and give you a little bit of the background on what the, the police department is undertaking to, to be a modern police force, to be able to handle these types of issues. At the outset, we would note that the approach that we are coming to this issue with is one that we're very cognizant of the fact that the First Amendment to the United States Constitution recognizes the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. And that's something that we take to heart as this being a mechanism to preserve that right, to create a process by which the public can peaceably assemble, and as peaceably implies, to ensure that when those gatherings occur, the public can gather in a meaningful and orderly fashion, they can present their grievances, they can exercise their rights, and they can do so without being, without those rights being challenged by unlawful acts by some who may wish to disrupt them.
Over the last couple of months, the police department has undertaken a great deal of effort to evolve a bit further with our crowd control and our, our group tactics, basically. So over the last short period, I've been to Anniston, Alabama, actually, for some training in all of these techniques through the federal government, where they bring all of the agencies across the entire United States, in fact internationally, to teach us all the best practices that everybody else is doing as well. So these are not techniques that are going to be new to us, they're not techniques that are going to be central only to us. It's actually what everybody else is doing, shaped directly for what we need here. Likewise, I've also been to some additional training with ILEUS, which is a mutual aid agreement, basically, that we have here locally, made up of, I'm not even sure how many police departments throughout the state of Illinois. Basically, the short version of it is, is that if we need more officers, if I need 100 officers now, I call ILEUS, and ILEUS sends them. They have a great deal of resources for us, communications, personnel, equipment, their own command structure. It is a great resource that we use in a variety of different ways, also for, for example, tornadoes or natural disasters, things like that, too. But they're the ones who really wrote the book on this. And through their training as well, we're once again shaping it to what we need here locally, and hopefully, well, quite honestly, hopefully we'll never have to use it, but we prefer being prepared and hoping for the, the best while preparing for the worst. Mr. Rattell, if you'd like to start the video. I'll speak while the video's playing. As a point of reference, this should be the 800 block of Edgebrook. I believe it was in 2012 that this occurred. If you look closely somewhere in this, you'll probably see myself and Chief Lowry walking around. It's just as a reference that this does, these kind of groups and crowds do happen in DeKalb, actually quite often. This is one of the rare occasions we managed to get a video camera in a good spot to, to view it. After this incident, we debriefed it closely and looked at some of the things that we could do better in light of all of these other trainings that we've had, and in light of some of the other things that have happened in other cities locally, or nationally. So this particular group never got exactly riotous, but it did become unlawful. As you can see that there, people are blocking the street, the third-party citizens in their apartments, or trying to get into the parking lots in touch there, were not very happy. But we figured out the best way to deal with it that night, and we managed to do so without any injuries to any officers. I believe we only made about five or six arrests of the particular troublemakers in there. Since that time, we've reviewed some things. We've updated our parking restrictions in that area, which has been a big help. Lighting has been updated, both on the street and with mobile lighting. We borrow the fire department's light trailers, and those make a very, very big light, and they're very helpful. We've continued to evolve our patrol schedules as well as the plans, keeping the officers in the right places at the right times. We've always had good cooperation with all the local police departments from this time on, but we've enhanced that even further. So it's a great deal of help there. And most importantly, we found that being proactive is the best medicine. We have a good relationship with all of the community leaders, local leaders, and we try to make sure that we have that set in place now, so if we need to call upon those people, we can do so. Likewise, and when a group is like that, that was basically a couple of large parties that turned into one really big party. So early intervention is the key. If we can get to those groups before they become too bad, or if we can get to the troublemakers before it gets too bad, then that's really the best key to get these things solved quickly and effectively.
So as Sergeant Woodruff indicated, we are aligning our training with other departments that participate in ILEUS. So when we do call for mutual aid, there are common understandings and expectations and common training standards. The, the kind of things that define a peaceful assembly or an unlawful assembly spread across many different types of gatherings. It may be the kind of disturbance reference in that video, or it may be the kind of disturbance that we've seen across the national news again and again in, in the past several years. The kind of things that peaceful assemblies have in common, they occur in appropriate and lawful locations. There aren't weapons present at them typically. It's individuals that are engaged in civic discourse and nonviolent communication, and they're doing so in a fashion that doesn't restrict the freedom of movement of third parties. Unlawful assemblies also tend to have things in common. They're, they're the inverse of peaceful assemblies. There's a legitimate threat of imminent violence or an actual outbreak of violence. There's a harm to third parties, whether it be restricting their access or actually physically harming people, or there's a harm to public or private property, and there's other similar unlawful behaviors.
So our first priority in all of this is to keep the environment safe for the assembly, whatever that may be. Now, from my standpoint, we focus on crowd management as well as crowd intervention. So crowd management could be Corn Fest. There's a whole lot of people in a small area, so the police department, the fire department are around in case some sort of problem should arise, be it the crowd, weather, anything like that. Crowd intervention comes into place where, once again, if there's a couple of people causing a problem, and we can remove those couple of people, we win, the rest of the crowd goes on about whatever they're doing, be it something like Corn Fest, or be it a protest of one way or another. If we do declare something to be unlawful, we do have to make what's called a dispersal order. It's very clear, we have to be very loud, we have some machines and things that help with this, but to make sure that everyone knows that the group is now being unlawful, we cite the particular ordinance or law, whichever one they're violating, tell them they got to leave, and we tell them where to go. So it's not just like we walk through the crowd shouting, "Everybody go away, everybody go away." We are very specific on what exactly law is being violated, and go east, north, whichever way is the best way to go. Providing that is the, the key, is to get, make sure that we get everyone out safely. We're not really interested in making arrests in these situations. We are just, however, interested just keeping the peace on a greater scale. Oh, I'm sorry. As we'll continue on here, these, basically, when we look at these crowds, we don't mean to insinuate that the entire crowd is somehow a problem. There's, all of the training really shows that there's usually only a couple people in, in the crowd that are causing the problems. It only takes a couple of people to cause those problems. As you can see from these gentlemen with sticks going after the police. From reviewing some of the good and the bad that happened in all of these different cities and the events in Ferguson and Baltimore, Houston apparently has a large abortion center, so they have a great deal of practice with passive resistors sitting down in the street doing things like that. East Lansing, Michigan, and Carbondale, SIU, both have a lot of celebratory events where groups come together after a football win or football loss, whatever it may be, and then take to the streets in a large mob. We've had a couple of small things like that here over the past. Weaponized signs is one of the concerns that have been raised, particularly in Houston on these examples. You can see this gentleman's helped himself to a traffic sign, to, to just, nothing good is going to come from that. So likewise, in Houston, they found that some people were making placards to hold up with whatever message they want. However, they were making them with two-by-fours, or baseball bats. There's really no good reason to have a baseball bat inside one of these protests unless you're trying to smuggle in a weapon. Same thing with two-by-fours. We want to make sure that people can have signs and do that kinds of things. We just don't want them to be attached to something that's potentially going to be used against the police officers. Similar things, a slingshot is a good example, the wrist rockets that some people have had its kids. Those are actually quite powerful, and if you put a large ball bearing in there, there's been a great deal of damage done to police officers. Again, if some kids are out playing with a slingshot, that's one thing, but if it's in the midst of one of these protests, there's really no good reason to have that there.
As Sergeant Woodruff indicated, our, our goal is on maintaining a safe environment, whether that be for the protesters or the gathering, wherever they are, or wherever they're headed to. The, the focus here is not on creating something that gives the police department the maximum ability to arrest or enforce, it's on creating that safe environment. So we've looked at examples from across the country, we've looked at case law from across the country, and we built in a very strong component in this ordinance that requires the police department to give that very clear, direct order, a reasonable notice to disperse, and then give people a meaningful opportunity to leave without facing imminent arrest. So saying, "You must disperse," and then going and immediately starting to grab people, isn't a reasonable approach to the problem. Where a, a true unlawful assembly- Where a true unlawful assembly exists, we're going to give people a meaningful opportunity to try and lower the tension and leave the area.
Some exaggerated somewhat examples of this. If you look at the group in the middle, I believe there are quite possibly more police there than there are protesters. A mass arrest of that sort is really not a good idea for anybody. It's going to be a colossal headache and quite a stress on all of the Police Department's resources. At the same time, this particular group, if we want them to disperse, they can't, they're surrounded. ILEUS prides themselves on, they don't want to make an arrest. If they really don't have to, they don't want to. They want people to protest, they want people to gather in a celebratory fashion, do whatever it is that they'd like to do, as long as they're doing it peacefully and lawfully, have at it. That's our philosophy as well. Another example of this, if we can get this crowd, if you can tell, they're all sitting in the middle surrounded by the police. If we can get this crowd to disperse, that's much more efficient and it's much more effective, and if we can get the problem people to disperse, the rest of the people can continue going on. Our goal is to escalate our response if we have to, but if that does happen and we have to escalate response, then to de-escalate it afterwards. If we have to go into a crowd and take someone out and arrest them, we're not going to arrest everybody. We're going to de-escalate back down and let the crowd continue to do whatever it is that they're doing lawfully and peacefully. Again, this is another example, there's a large number of officers to arrest just a few people, it's just not in line with the greater good. These particular people can't get out if they wanted to because the police are on one side and the buses or vans, whatever those are, are on the other side. So they are basically trapped, pretty much creating an environment where they have to resist, protest, whatever it may be. They don't have an opportunity to peacefully leave. So again, to echo Mr. Frieders, we're there to ensure a legal environment, a safe legal environment for exercise of their constitutional rights. Our emphasis is on abating the conditions rather than making arrests, imposing fines, all of it's going to be based upon the context. And we will provide clear law, notice of the laws and expectations to the community leaders, if there is a protest leader, someone like that, so that we can make sure that everybody has the rules of engagement before we start, and then hopefully everyone will be able to behave themselves and go home safely.
The city does still maintain some content neutral restrictions on use of city property. We certainly follow the state code and the Illinois Vehicle Code with regard to the use of public rights of way. There are some very clear laws regarding that. The city does have a mass gathering process when there is a planned mass gathering, whether it be commercial or non-commercial, and that ordinance was designed to be flexible and scaled depending on the size of a gathering, to try and give the city a meaningful opportunity for some advance notice and to work with organizers to plan a safe event. While we have emphasized the goal here of abating unsafe conditions rather than engaging in arrests, it's also important to note that if there is some underlying unlawful behavior that occurs in one of these gatherings, there remains the potential that someone would be arrested or charged for that without regard to, in order to peacefully disperse. Where something adverse is happening, the Police Department has to intervene, take whatever action they can that's appropriate in the circumstances, and we're not going to wait and see if somebody stops assaulting another person or stops fighting while we give an order to disperse. So this does have to be viewed in kind of a continuum with other types of interaction that we have with the public, and this is intended to be a very low-intensity interaction that gives an opportunity for engagement and an opportunity to keep the environment safe for everyone.
I touched on this a moment ago, but just to reiterate, we just want to be proactive. We want to have all the tools that we could possibly need before this occurs. The hardest part of my job, frankly, is predicting the future. If I walk into a crowd, I don't really know what to expect, but if I have all of the ordinances and the tools that I need to know that I can handle any problem that's presented to me, then I'm in a good position. If I have to walk into a crowd and I'm already behind and I don't have the tools that I need, that's not so good. So to that end, that's what these ordinances are for. We've already begun the training, we've already begun contacting all the local leaders, and to make sure that we have as much of this done in advance as humanly possible.
That last point is one that plays a large role in the Police Department's policies and in the Police Department's training on this, and it's not as visible in the ordinance, but I think it merits note, that this isn't a matter of just being reactive and waiting until there's a large gathering. The Police Department does a lot of work to engage with the community, to be aware of what the citizens' concerns are, to be aware of where there are likely to be gatherings, to try and interact with people that are organizing them, and to ensure that we can have a safe environment for them, that we can support their rights, that we can ensure that they have an opportunity to meaningfully engage and exercise those rights in a safe location. The two ordinances that we have before you for consideration tonight, first is the unlawful assembly ordinance, Section 52.92. That ordinance goes through and defines what constitutes an unlawful assembly. It requires the giving of an order to disperse where it's possible to do so, again, giving the public a path to disperse. It outlines that under this ordinance, there's really only liability, one that ordered to disperse has been given, a legal and safe path has been given, and someone fails to do so. The Police Department is charged with making that determination, and again, if they determine that an assembly is unlawful and somebody ultimately was charged, that person would have due process rights to contest whether it was an unlawful assembly in court or not. Everything that we've put together there is based on our review of, again, experiences of other similar communities and larger communities and smaller communities, and events that were planned and unplanned, and a significant amount of case law from all 50 states that defines the extent of authority of a public body. Our approach to this has been conservative, we've tried to build in as many protections for the public rights as possible. The other ordinance that we have before you is 52.93. What that ordinance contemplates is regulations regarding weapons at assemblies. I think it's important to note, 52.93 only really comes into effect where there is an unlawful assembly. So it doesn't make it unlawful to have any of the items that are listed in there. It may be unlawful to walk around with some of these weapons independently under state law, but what this is really aimed at is what Sergeant Woodruff was talking about. If you have a large assembly and you're interacting with that assembly in a peaceable fashion, and there's a very small number of people in the assembly who may be exhibiting some hostile actions or may be present with things that don't make sense in the context of the assembly that they're in, that are weapons, it gives the Police Department the ability to go and interact with those people, to, if it's possible to do so, to either remove the person or remove the weapon from that scene. And again, even in this, we have tried to preserve the rights of individuals to display signs, to display whatever, whatever other information they may wish to display, but make sure that we're doing it in a safe fashion. So these are all crafted at preserving that safe environment, not just for the Police Department, not just for third parties, but for the people that want to assemble and present their grievances to the government. And that concludes the presentation on this. We'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions of either City Attorney or Officer Woodruff? Alderman Noriko?
Obviously, situations in Ferguson and New York and so forth have highlighted the importance of dealing reasonably and successfully with citizens, but have there been specific concerns in DeKalb? I don't want you to break confidentiality, but just, I mean, can you speak in general to that?
There have been some instances, as Sergeant Woodruff indicated, where this may have been a useful tool to interact with people and try and redirect them in a more positive fashion. But separate from that, I think it is a reality of the society that we live in that many public bodies are one situation away from a very significant public outpouring of emotion. And it's important that we be prepared for that, we plan for that in every way possible, we plan with the best training and the best people to make the best decisions and try and prevent a tragedy from happening, but in the event that we do have any kind of adverse condition here, whether it's something that was avoidable or unavoidable, this is another tool that makes us prepared for whatever the consequences of that may be. So we're not looking at the, we have an example of a 2012 occurrence on Edgebrook where this may have been a useful tool to go out and address the crowd and redirect people. We're not looking at, I can't give you a whole list of specific examples where this has happened, this is a, from time to time, as I've indicated before, the Police Department comes and says, "We have a suggestion based on our training or based on what we're seeing in other communities." This was an issue that was raised by officers, it was something that came out of the training that Sergeant Woodruff did that other officers have done, and they said, "This is somewhere where our code is really lacking, and we don't have a low-intensity tool that we need to be able to address this kind of situation should it happen." So this is more of a planning and proactive step than it is reacting to an unfortunate event. I think, as you had mentioned with regard to Ferguson, that's certainly something that law enforcement agencies across the state followed, and there were two very distinct phases of the police response to that. And when, we'll say the second phase started, the second phase tended to be a more engaging and proactive communication-based phase instead of just a confrontational phase, and they were certainly reacting with the training and the best thoughts that they had available at that time. But the more engaging mechanism certainly seemed to be a lot more successful in addressing and quelling violence and promoting discourse and some resolution of some of the conflicts there. So that's what we're trying to aim towards.
Okay, thank you.
May I address the Council Mayor?
Sure. Chief Lowry?
Not to belabor the point, but there have been examples in this community where large gatherings have evolved, some of which evolved towards being unlawful or where arrests were made. Those have happened up in student areas north of the university, they've happened post-Ferguson, where we had some post-Ferguson demonstrations with several, that have gone from a handful to several hundred. And it's important to understand that this, these measures that we take, have taken from a proactive perspective, are there to address those things that might one day get out of control. We've been very fortunate and been able to control those situations to date, and we look forward to constantly evolving and improving our practices. So we have had real examples, yet these are measures we're trying to put in place to create a better tomorrow when we encounter them again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion? From Council, I do have Lynn Fazekas wishes to speak to this topic.
Hello again. The video of the August 2012 Assembly. I actually got some eyewitness reports of that, and it was scary as all get-out just listening to what was going on with that crowd. Chief Lowry, he was new, and my respect for his work was sealed at that point, no doubt. But this, this ordinance is very flawed, though. It's, there are a lot of redundancies, there are, it's, you know, as, as an American, I, you were talking about citizens with emotion. I have an emotional reaction from having to be searched when I come in here, and that, you know, without probable cause, and in a discriminatory fashion. And, and so this is something, thank you for not waiving second reading on this, because when I come back, I'll have it all worked out as to why this ordinance, while I understand the motive, it's worse than that gosh darn truancy ordinance that got killed a couple of years ago. Definite constitutional concerns. I believe that most of the tools that we have for this are already on the books, and I bridle at the term unlawful assembly. I mean, this is the United States, you know? This has to be approached very, very carefully. So that's all I'm going to say for now, I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Oh, no, that's not what I, I have one more thing, and that is, I don't recall this ever, this idea ever being brought to the Committee of the Whole. It's like it came out of nowhere. Now, a lot of times I have problems streaming the meetings, that's a whole nother public comment, but if this did not come up through Committee of the Whole, I would kind of consider it facetiously, but pointedly, that this would be an unlawful assembly of an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Bessie Kornopoulos. And Bessie, if you wish to speak, you've registered for G4, 5, and 6, if you wish to speak to those at this point.
For items four and five, which is what you're discussing right now, when I first saw this, I, Mrs. Fazekas pointed out some things, too, you know, where did this come from? How did it become initiated? It seems as if, and I'm glad to see proactivity, if there's anything I've learned from the chief, is, you know, being, police proactivity in the community is a phenomenal way to take care of things. But I'm wondering, you know, how this came about and wondering if there should be more discussion and bringing in more elements, like what other, what are other communities in Illinois doing, you know, some more information about that, what leaders have been connected with, who in the university has been connected with, are there laws on the books? That was the first thing that went through my mind, you know, certainly we have methods of covering these kinds of things on the books already. And when I was looking at the Edgebrook item there and thinking of the other shooting, I think, was that a few months ago when there was a shooting because of a large party over at the, in the university area? Through the crime-free housing, it would seem, I had to go to landlord school because our church owns the building next to this, so I ended up going to landlord school, and one of the things that they talked about was having a good lease. And if leases say that you should not have a lot of people, you know, in an apartment, you know, large gatherings, that would be a very good way of being very proactive, you know, you can't have any more than 10 people in an apartment to gather for a party, and once you do, you're out, you're done. And that would be something that you could work through with the various landlords, which might help stop a party and a party and a party and a party and a party melding together. This is, it's good to be proactive, and heaven help us, we do live in a different world and God forbid that anything tragic has hap, has had happened in many parts of the world happens here, but I'm not so sure that this is quite the way to go about it without a little bit more time for community input. Maybe, maybe we're moving a little too rapidly on this. And as far as number six, that's kind of a different one, so I'll just wait.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mayor, thank you.
Further discussion from Council? Hearing none, this before us in first reading, I can take a voice vote on this to receive in pile, Dean, or should we do a roll call?
I would say yes to roll call.
Roll call, okay, roll call, please.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-3, adding Section 52.93 Weapons at Unlawful Assemblies to Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals to the City's Municipal Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Discussion. Dean and Officer Woodruff referred to this section in previous comments, was there anything you wished to add, Dean?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Are there questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-4, amending Chapter 9, Establishment of Fees, Section 9.05, Engineering Plan Review and Inspection Fees of the City Municipal Code. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Alderman Markort. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Discussion. I'll turn to John Luskowski, city engineer.
Good evening, mayor and city council. This item is part of a, part of the long-term engineering plan and process to kind of streamline and make the division more efficient. And it started back in February when we put out a RFQ for 17 different aspects of engineering services that could be potentially outsourced or supplemented the, supplement the internal staffing availability. So after that, we decided that on August 19th, at COW, we distributed an RFP for plan review and inspection services. It was awarded on December 14th at a city council meeting, at the December 14th, 2015 meeting. And at that time, we had selected three different firms to outsource plan review and inspection services to. And as part of that process, now we're revisiting the fee structure that's gonna be paying for those services. So currently, what we're doing is, there's a $1,000 site planner fee that's charged and a three and a half percent plan review and engineering inspection fee. So this three and a half percent fee is based on what's called an engineer's opinion of probable cost. And so when an engineer comes into city hall and has a set of plans, he's gonna look at those plans and prepare an estimate of cost of those improvements based on the work that's gonna be designed. And there are three separate exemptions from that, and that includes the cost of the building, the cost of moving topsoil, and 75% of the cost of sanitary sewer improvements. And so this is the fee structure that we're currently utilizing right now. And some of the difficulties that we find sometimes is that when an applicant comes in with their plan set, they're not always certain what that fee is going to be. So three and a half percent, there may be a difference of opinion on the engineer's opinion of probable costs between myself and the design engineer, at which time we'll discuss it and resolve that inconsistency or the discrepancy between our thoughts and come to a number for the applicant. That can create a little bit of a delay sometimes, so we're thinking the new system may be able to overcome that hurdle. The, the, the next challenge that we've been finding is that the costs sometimes aren't always representative of what the DeKalb market sees. So this engineer's opinion of probable cost, if it was an engineer from southern Illinois or maybe DuPage County, the unit prices that they use to calculate this engineer's opinion of probable cost is not gonna be the same as what our local market is, the materials here. So that estimate of cost is either gonna be a little bit higher, a little bit lower, and it's really hard to dial in an accurate price or a cost for that applicant. So one of the things that we've found too is that the transitioning from this percentage-based fee to a cost-based fee is gonna be a little bit more flexible for staff. It's gonna be able, it'll enable staff to be a little bit more accurate with the fees that the applicants are gonna be being charged. And in addition to that, I guess an example, way to look at it is you can also see it as being a little bit more business-friendly. So if you were to look at a very large development, say, a development that costs, I don't know, around $10 million, three and a half percent of that's $350,000. We've found that on projects of that magnitude, that the incurred engineering fees are probably more like $100,000 or so, which means that extra $250,000 isn't really going to work that we performed on the plan review. And it may be a cost savings to industries that are looking at coming to, coming to the city of DeKalb. So we felt that a more accurate representation of those fees would be the hourly costs of either my review time or that of the engineers performing that review. And it would more fairly provide a more equitable fee structure to, to the applicant. And at this time, I had, there's a table that we developed based on acreage that would kinda give an idea of how much money we would collect at the time when the applicant brought his plans in. So it's based on acreage, and the categories are from zero to a half acre, half acre to one acre, one to five, five to 10, and 10 above. Now, when I was putting together this table, I looked at the most recent plans that we've reviewed and the fees associated with them. So I looked at the RP lumber, Summittl, the DeKalb Forge Coal Palette, University Village, I'm sorry, University Plaza, and Christ Community Church. And based on those acreages and the figures that it costs to do, perform that plan review, we came up with this table for an initial escrow amount. And what that amount is, is its amount to get the project started. So when the applicant comes in, the person in that permit intake can look at the plan and say, okay, your project's between this and this much acreage, we're gonna request this amount of escrow from you at this time. Now, there are those instances where there may be a lot of work performed on a small site. In an instance like that, building or engineering, we get a notification from finance when that escrow's getting low. We notify the applicant and say, look, the fees that either have been accumulated either in-house or by the outsourced consulting engineer are going to be exceeding the amount of the escrow. At that time, we would ask that they replenish that, that amount to facilitate the cost of those inspections. And that would be covered in a fee schedule reimbursement agreement that they would sign at the time when they present the plan. So this is kind of an overview of why we're implementing the new cost system. And if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them at this time.
Other questions for city engineer Luskowski?
I would add to city engineer's comments. With regard to engineering firms, the city council has approved a list of vendors for this service. With regard to planning review, the community development department is currently developing an RFP for plan review services, and that's something that would return to the council. And we would be bringing that back, going through the RFP, getting vendors approved before the staff would start utilizing this relative to planning.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of city engineer? Hearing none. Bessie Kornopoulos? Have your questions been answered?
No. Sort of. Not really. But...
One of the questions was, are we, is the city planning on doing the same thing as far as plan review? Yeah, so that was one of the questions. So, am I to understand that up until this time, there was no charge for certain services rendered? So all of these services were for free?
There were fees charged.
There were fees charged.
A thousand dollars plus three and a half.
So this is gonna be an increase in, in the fee? You know, if you could, you know, I'm not sure. I have a handle on it. Maybe everybody else understands it, but I don't know. If you understand it, I guess that's good enough, but I, I don't get it. And could this be considered, how can I say this? I don't think it's, it's right for the city staff to have to, to do things, you know, for people without, you know, being properly reimbursed. You know, if it's costing, you know, it should be, it should be paid for. But could this be considered maybe unfriendly to business in any way? Is that something that you would consider? Just, just a question. You know, it's not necessarily my question, but a question. And when is that other part going to come up too? You know, for the planning? You know, because I know a lot of services have often been rendered and it's not been paid for, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Or aren't you allowed to answer?
Mayor, if I, if I can, I...
Go ahead.
With regard to 3M project, for example, the city council may recall, we recently came to you with that as a one-off, where we asked to do this kind of arrangement. And the reason we did that is because the developer requested it. Had the city imposed a three and a half percent review fees in that, we would have been charging several hundred thousand, several hundreds of thousands of dollars in the three and a half percent engineer's estimated probable cost fees. Instead, we were able to do the reimbursement agreement, which cut the expense to the developer by, I wanna say, 60 or 70%.
Sounds business-friendly to me.
That's the intention here.
Thank you. Other questions? Discussion? Alderman, Favor.
So, similar to what Bessie had just asked. So it was, and what you had said earlier, that it was a reduction from 350,000 to 100,000. And it's still the first reading, so there's more time to ask additional questions. But, so in the future, there's another large distribution center coming to DeKalb. How, because I know that right now, we're only at 10 acres or more, but we'd also wanna make sure that the city staff is being paid for the work they're doing, the city's being reimbursed for the work that's being put out. So have we, how, I guess, are we gonna go forward with balancing out that, that fee schedule?
Sure. So that, that fee schedule would be just the initial escrow that we're collecting at this time. So beyond that, there would be a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, I think there's, there's a fee reimbursement agreement that's proposed with the, with the applicant. So with, contained within that agreement then would say, any costs above and beyond that, $10,000 for that 10-acre escrow would be covered under that agreement, and they'd be responsible for the direct costs associated with either in-house or consultant perform services.
We also recognize that there may be projects of a greater complexity or scope. If we have a several hundred acre project come in, and we recognize the costs are going to be significantly greater, under subsection E2, the city can look at an individual project and based on the complexity, say the initial escrow should be established at a higher level. And then at the conclusion of the project, if there's any money remaining in the escrow, it gets refunded back to the, to the developer.
Okay. And, right, and I do, I do wanna stay business-friendly. One last question is, you may not know the answer, so if we can just get back. When we charge an hourly rate, are we charging, like, let's say I make $20 an hour, are we charging $20 an hour, or are we charging the full burdened rate of the employee that's doing the work?
I defer to Kathy on this one, but I believe our, our benefits and our, our other costs as an employee are also billed to, for those services. Yeah.
Thank you. The full, okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. At this point, I'll turn to communications. Alderman Jacobson?
No report.
Alderman Markort?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
One thing I wanted to mention, we are having a meeting this Thursday on strategic planning. It is an opportunity for people to see the library. And Dee has mentioned that, you know, after the council meeting that'll be there, if people wanna kinda see part of the library, she'll be available to answer questions and give it to her. So I, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for those that haven't seen the town library to perhaps stop over there.
Thank you. Alderman Noriko?
Two points. I'd like to remind citizens that in this weather, it's important to get sidewalks, driveways shoveled. I've had several citizens come to me and say, I know houses on my block where days go by and nothing is done. And, you know, it's a neighborly thing to do. It's also the legal action to take, and it's important. Our public works department gets out there and takes care of the streets for us. We can take care of our sidewalks. Also, regarding the meeting that I had, it was a good experience for me. It was a learning experience in a lot of different ways. And I appreciate the citizens who came, who spoke up in the spirit of trying to learn my thinking and to learn more about the city processes. And so I'm looking forward to having another meeting in, probably in March. I was encouraged to do the meetings quarterly. Thank you.
Alderman Favor?
Nothing to report.
City manager?
Thank you, mayor. Two things. In light of executive session, I would recommend that we have all three items, the item from this meeting, as well as the two items from the committee of the whole, so just to clarify. And then, secondly, I wanna take this opportunity to thank and congratulate our deputy fire chief Greg Hoyle, who's retiring effective this Friday. I wanna thank him for 30 years of service to this community, and I've had the privilege of working with him and seeing the quality of work and, and the difference he's made in the community. And I hope I'm not totally stealing Fire Chief Hicks' thunder, but I wanna take this opportunity to thank him for his years of service.
Thank you. City attorney?
I would echo the city manager's comments. It's been a great privilege to work with Greg. He is an upstanding leader and employee of the city, and he's also a very fine man. He has been a, a great influence on our fire department for decades, and he will be sorely missed. And also, again, periodically, we advise the council, when we have suggestions come up from employees, the ordinances that were presented tonight with regard to unlawful assemblies, those were something that came out of the, the training that the police department is undertaking to modernize our, our methods and to make sure that we're following the latest trends in policing and, and public engagement. And those were suggestions that came from our officers and came up, and that's what brought them to you tonight. And it's a credit to our officers that they are looking proactively to identify ways of improving our department.
City clerk?
No report.
Assistant. City manager?
I also wanna congratulate Deputy Chief Hoyle, and I wish him much happiness and much success in his retirement. Wanna add on to Alderman Snow's comments about the strategic plan this Thursday, starting at 5:00 PM, the city council retreat. And the library main entrance, there'll be people available to direct us to the appropriate meeting room, which is in the lower level. And I look forward to a very great discussion on finishing up the strategic plan, which will incorporate the comments from the community's feedback that was solicited late November, early December. So, see you on Thursday.
Thank you. Chief Lowry?
No report.
Finance director Haley?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
I also wanna thank Greg Hoyle for his 30 years of service at the fire department. Everybody else kinda got to it before me. Greg's been a mainstay in the department for 30 years now. He's gonna be sorely missed. He's been one of the best deputy chiefs there ever could be. Friday at 2:00, you're all welcome to come and tend a cake and coffee to wish him farewell. So, thanks for your service.
Thank you. Director Davina?
It was my pleasure to work with Greg on the review of the 2015 ICC building codes. We went up to Rockford multiple times together to work with the group at large. The, so I thank Greg for all his work on that. The Building Board of Appeals will meet again on the 21st. They're continuing their review of the codes with the intent of bringing a recommendation to the council that the city of DeKalb adopt the 2015 codes. At issue still is the issue of sprinklers and whether they're included in townhouses. They do plan to exempt them out for single-family homes. They've been discussing this at length. And then also, over the next few weeks and months, you'll be seeing two new projects, annexations into the city along Sycamore Road for some new commercial buildings. We're pleased to see the activity.
Director Holden?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to commend the public works crews that worked over the weekend. We had about 12 hours of full operation on Saturday and then a limited operation for about another 12 hours, dealing with drifting snow and ice conditions. So thanks to those guys. Also, wanna remind our residents to stay back from the salt trucks, recommended at least 50 feet. These trucks are doing different maneuvers to remove the snow and ice, and so it's important that we stay back away from them. Thank you.
Okay. I'd encourage council members to consider the offer city manager Gore has extended to tour various city departments with directors. I had the pleasure of spending time Friday with Chief Hicks, and personally scheduled with Director Holden and Director Davina. I would encourage other council members to look at your schedules and please respond to those individual directors with interest. Fire, police, community development, and public works have been offered. With that, I would entertain a motion... With that, I would entertain a motion to have council move to executive session for the approval to discuss personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120 slash two C one, to discuss security measures as provided for in 5 ILCS 120 slash two C eight, and to discuss minutes, executive session minutes as provided for in 5 ILCS 120 slash two C 21. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carried. Will adjourn to executive session.